Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the East Brandywine Board of Supervisors meeting for tonight, Thursday, January 20th, 2022. Reminder, recording device will be used during this meeting, and we're going to open the meeting up with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to start the meeting out with public comment for agenda items. And just wanted to remind everybody that the rules for conduct of public meeting established by Resolution 2008, the time allotted to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. An additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. I'll open it up for a public comment, but I do want to start with the Fire Department first, just because there's a necessity of time here.
Good evening, Joe Edwards, East Brandywine Fire Company. For the last 12 years, I've had the honor of serving East Brandywine Township as one of the chiefs of East Brandywine Fire Company. This year, I met with Chief D'Amico prior to the year starting, and he thought we should start to entertain a succession plan for the fire company as to who would be the next fire chief. Since we've always said at East Brandywine, we have six or seven people that can fill every position there and be capable of filling it, the chief and I came to an agreement that we were going to appoint a new deputy chief of our fire department. The selection for the deputy chief is someone who's been in the fire service for over 30 years. He is vastly trained in the fire service. He lives in East Brandywine Township. His wife and two kids live in Hideaway Farms. He's been an integral part of our fire company as captain, serving the community, responding to numerous calls, instituting training, instituting policies at the fire company, also working on designing all of our fire trucks. It's with great pleasure that I end my reign as deputy chief, and I'm able to announce to the Board of Supervisors, Deputy Chief Sergio Oura is now going to serve the fire company and be in charge down there. So Sergio, come on up a second. Yep. So gentlemen, this is Sergio. He'll be in contact with the township, the police chief, Jeff Yankanich. Either him or Chief D'Amico will be attending the meetings, and we've got the fire company in great hands with Sergio. I'll still be around as township fire marshal, still a member of East Brandywine Fire Company, but Sergio will be the second in command of the department as of tonight in the last week, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Obviously, big shoes to fill.
Yep. If you don't mind, I'll give the fire report real quick while I'm up here, and we'll be done. Last month, there was 45 total incidents for the fire company, 36 fire calls, nine medical. In East Brandywine Township, we had 11 fire calls and three medicals. We assisted various communities throughout Wallace Township six times. We used 155 gallons of East Brandywine gas. We had three training sessions with 18 members in attendance. We also had an average of 13 people responding to fire calls, which, again, I leave you guys with, that is just phenomenal numbering when volunteer companies around here are responding with one and two members. The police department was on the scene of a dispatched house fire that two of the trucks showed up with one person on. East Brandywine streeted three fire trucks that day in the middle of the day with 16 people in attendance. It's unheard of in the area. The fire company's doing terrific. If you take notice down at the fire company, the brickwork is now done in the front, the brickwork is now done on the side, the station is looking phenomenal. They plan on moving their work inside for the duration of the winter. The walls are going up inside. Feel free to stop down anytime. There's a lot of activity going on. We'll be glad to show you around. We anticipate early May for completion. Also happy to announce, I don't know if I'm supposed to, but we have appointed a rescue truck committee. We in our long-term budget, that's in there for being ordered soon. The rescue truck will replace our current rescue engine. We have a total of 12 people? 12, 12 members on the committee that have been meeting at Apple Cross to come up with specifications for a new rescue truck to serve East Brandywine. We have a ton of accidents up and down the 322 corridor. Just last week, there was a five-car accident in front of Coppers that the fire department had to handle, and the police department did a fine job with it also. With that being said, if you have any questions for me, I'll be signing off and turning it over to the other guys.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Kyle. Joe, I just want to take a minute and thank you for all the support, help, guidance, training that you've provided the police department over all the years. I know you're not going anywhere, but I just want you to know that anytime there's change, there's, you know, I just want to make sure you get your recognition and thanks from the police department for everything, so don't be a stranger.
Thank you.
You know you're allowed to come in anytime. I'll leave Jackie in place.
Thanks. Thank you. Any other public comment for agenda items? Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and move on to the minutes of the previous meeting. We are going to hold off on supervisor winners would like to make a couple tweaks to the December 16th Board of Supervising Meeting Minutes, so we're going to table that till the next meeting, and then we'll go ahead and take a vote on the Board of Supervisors' reorganization meeting minutes from January 3rd, 2022.
I move we accept the minutes.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're going to go on to Treasurers' Report and Authorization to Pay Bills.
Mr. Chairman, if I may jump in, this is the first regular meeting of the new 2022 Board. Would you like, or should we consider returning to reading the balances aloud? If so, I'm available to do so.
I have no problem doing that. I think when we have time allotted, we should. If we're jammed up on the meeting, we will do it the way we've done it in the past, but yeah.
If I may add, I think some of the balances can be set in total to save time, and I think some need to be highlighted, so that you're not reading 22 different balances, so.
Shall I give it a try?
Sure. In the future, for instance, the Capital Projects Fund, I think the total balance is what's important, per se, not necessarily each. But the Open Space Referendum Fund should always be brought to the public's attention.
Very good. So your packet this evening has year-to-date 2022 figures as well as unaudited fiscal year 2021 year-end figures. The bank account balances as of January 19th, 2022 are, the general fund had a balance of $931,314.03. The two contra cash accounts, the one that's due from developers and the one that's due from stormwater applicants, had balances of $87,906.31 and $2,738.18, respectively. The township's special revenue funds are as follows. The Fire Services Fund had a balance of $38,537.84. The Solid Waste Fund had a balance of $1,905.49. The Traffic Impact Fee Fund had a balance of $1,776,086.97. The Open Space Referendum Fund had a balance of $3,077,077.05. The Open Space Fee and Lew account had a balance of $89,413.35. The Consolidated Capital Projects Funds had a balance of $1,417,600.30. The Township State Fund had a balance of $391,936.41. The Non-Uniformed Pension Fund had a balance of $6,700, oh, I'm sorry, the Uniformed Pension Fund had a balance of $6,746,704.60, whereas the Non-Uniformed Pension Fund had a balance of $2,158,045.65.
Thank you. Let's take a minute to see that the finances are in order. Okay, do I have a motion?
I move we accept the Treasurer's Report.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll turn it over to Luke for your report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My apologies for the length of my report. I will attempt to proceed quickly. First, a personnel update. I'm pleased to announce that Emily Albert has accepted the township's offer to join the East Brandywine Township team as a full-time employee. Ms. Albert's status change is effective this Monday, January 24th. I'm also pleased to report that Township Treasurer Lisa Laitis has completed the paperwork required to amend the parties eligible to execute the checks on our bank accounts at S&amp;T Bank, effective immediately this evening. All three supervisors are eligible to sign the checks in your packet. All checks still require three signatures. We've got two items of resident feedback that may be of interest to the board. First, on the designation of emergency service providers. In January 2021, the Board of Supervisors, on the recommendation of the fire chief and as approved by the township manager, amended the ambulance service provider to the emergency service zone 4901, which is located in the southwest portion of the township. The amendment took the basic life support provider from Westwood Ambulance Service to Tower Direct Medic 93. That same arrangement was preserved in Resolution 1 of 2022, adopted earlier this month. I've heard from a number of residents, and there are three points that I would draw your attention to. One, I've been receiving calls in light of concerns about the closure of Brandywine Hospital and what that means to the Tower Direct service. Number two, I have heard from residents disappointment that the change was not communicated to the residents of the affected area, and many residents continued to make voluntary contributions to Westwood Ambulance without knowing that they were no longer the designated service provider. I accept responsibility for not including the change in any communications from the township, such as our newsletter. There's also some concerns raised about the fiscal impact of the change, specifically under the Westwood service. If a resident was billed for a response and they were members of the Westwood Ambulance Service, any portion not covered by insurance would be waived by Westwood. It isn't clear to me that Tower Direct has the same policy. I just wanted to bring that to your attention since the board adopted Resolution 1 just two weeks ago. Second matter of concern, and I know there are some residents, at least one resident from the Hideaway Farms area in the audience. The East Brandywine Township Municipal Authority accepted dedication of the sanitary sewer collection and conveyance facilities in the Hideaway Farms development on December 14th, and began invoicing the residents for sewer service on January 1st, 2022. In anticipation of accepting this dedication, the authority entered into a bulk service agreement with Aqua PA for the treatment and disposal of wastewater generated by the development. The authority has adopted a quarterly rate of $270 to cover the Aqua charges plus the operation, maintenance, and administrative costs associated with the new infrastructure. A letter sent to the affected homeowners generated a great many calls and emails to township staff. I've attempted to return these calls. I acknowledge I may have missed a few individuals. My apologies if I did so. The rate is significantly higher than the $150 per quarter charged to the homeowners while the collection system was owned by Southdown Homes. The authority has committed to maintain user fees as close as possible to the operating expenses and believes the user rate is reasonable and adequate to cover the operating expenses and provide for a contingency for necessary repairs and future equipment replacement. The harder question to answer in this instance is why is the rate higher and nearly twice as high? The difficulty in responding to that question is I don't know what criteria Southdown Homes used in determining the $150 rate. I presume they had a far more favorable arrangement with Aqua Pennsylvania for the treatment of wastewater, and that accounts for the difference in rates. In any event, the municipal authority is a quasi-independent, covered by the Authorities Act, where this board appoints members, but it is not the township itself that made the rate-setting exercise. Next up, the much anticipated final rule describing the eligible uses for COVID funds in the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 is finally released and will become effective on April 1st. We applied for the money in June 2021 and received the first of two deposits. The two deposits will add up to a total of $947,151. The State Association's advice was to, for all townships, to wait for the treasurer rule before making decisions on spending this money. This advice was prudent because it was anticipated that the range of projects would be wider in the final rule than were allowed under the interim final rule. The bottom line is my recommendation for three uses. The first priority of these funds is to first, seek any eligible revenue replacements, to transfer from the earmarked federal monies to the general or capital funds. Second, to use the COVID funds for previously identified needs to improve air circulation and reduce condensation within the municipal complex. And third, to meet any MPDS pollution reduction plan commitments we have. That will dovetail, I think, with a presentation we have later on the agenda tonight. Next up, the Chester County Water Resources Authority has provided an update on the progress to the Beaver Creek Dam located near the Apple Cross community, or more specifically, near the green on hole number one of the golf course. The authority's contractor has completed demobilization of the equipment and seating stabilizing of the entire site. Work is now suspended for the duration of the bald eagle nesting season and will resume on July 31st. I would be remiss if I didn't send my thanks to Greg Thomas and the entire authority team for providing frequent and detailed updates throughout the project. A reminder, the PSAT's Annual Conference is April 24th through 27th in Hershey, PA. Event promotional materials are in your report. Staff will be making the hotel reservations and event registration next week. I'd like to know from the supervisors if you plan to attend on that timeline.
I, I, I'm a 95% yes.
Okay. Nope, okay. All right. PennDOT has received over 500 online comments and submissions for the US 30 Eastern Project Area Virtual Open House Plans Display. Based on the feedback and input from the public, PennDOT is extending the virtual open house comment period through February 4th. The project website is www.us30-chesco.com, and I would encourage anyone who has not taken a moment to review the plans for the bypass to take a moment to review and provide comment. Highway 30 is, I think, a huge part of many of our daily lives and commutes, and the proposals to mitigate traffic there are of interest. Lastly, attached is a January 11th, 2022 letter from the Brandywine Valley Act of Aging, thanking the board for its 2021 contribution. Thank you for your patience. It's been a busy few weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we can, we have the building inspector's report. I think we're good there. The, we'll move on to Township Roadmaster's Report.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say a couple of 2021 accomplishments. The department completed the interior light installation, which included all the LED lights in the meeting room and throughout the whole building. We chipped at 261 locations and collected $1,950 in fees, collected 262 and a half tons of leaves, produced 353 yards of mulch, and collected $4,180 in fees. The police used 15,102 gallons of unleaded at $24,651. The road department used 2,679 gallons unleaded, 2,670 gallons of diesel, a total cost of $10,223. And the fire company used 2,183 gallons unleaded and 951 gallons diesel, total cost $5,846. Our road construction contract included the paving of Aspen and Foxtail Lane in the Marshall Creek Development. Low bid was from DeRocco Brothers Incorporated, which was $214,259. To date, we have not received a final invoice from the contractor. And we also contracted with a company called Mr. Rehab for lining 520 feet of the 18-inch corrugated metal pipe in the Aspen Drive, Marshall Creek Development. The total cost for the project's $49,396, and we anticipate the pipelining to be completed within the next two months. The township sold a 97 brush hog for $725, a 2007 Jeep for $8,000, and a 2010 X-Mark for $3,800. And we, one of the larger projects was the completion of debris removal and restoration following the September 1st flood. There was quite a bit of work. A lot of stone was purchased, and we were able to pretty much mitigate everything except for, there's two more, I'll say, situations or issues that need to be handled. And we also received from DEP the Growing Greener Grant for $246,021, and that was for the installation of subsurface basins, reconstruction of swales, and the Coberton Run development. We continue to work with Cedarville Engineering Group on the restoration of Coberton Run, located within the Hideaway Development, and Beth Uller will be talking about the PRP plan a little bit later, so I'll skip the rest of that part. And projects for 2002 are, replace the corrugated metal pipe in Kristen Circle intersection. We'll be replacing that with a plastic pipe, HDPE. We also plan to remove trees in the Apple Cross Drift Fields located off East Reesville Road, I'm sorry, and labor and equipment costs will be reimbursed by the municipal authority. We continue ongoing stormwater sewer inspections, and the paving projects planned for this year are Gloucester Drive, Berkeley Drive, Rowley Drive, Timber Pass, and Cumberland Ridge Development. And the scope of work includes asphalt overlay and also seal coat of some of the roads. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll turn it over to the East Brandywine Township Police Department. Chief?
Good evening. The total monthly events for East Brandywine Township during the month of December 2021, we had 2,073 events, completed 209 investigations, department had five criminal arrests, one summary arrest, one warrant arrest. There were no juvenile petitions filed. We had nine traffic accidents, issued 38 traffic citations, issued 52 traffic warnings, and officers logged 9,195 miles of patrol. In the packets tonight, I have the monthly stats for December, but I also put our yearly totals in. For 2021, we had 26,353 incidents recorded. We had 2,199 investigations were completed, 76 criminal arrests, 16 summary arrests, 23 warrant arrests. There were seven juvenile petitions. We investigated 81 traffic accidents. Officers issued 1,311 traffic citations, had 945 traffic warnings, and officers logged 118,228 miles of patrol. Training completed for the month of December. We didn't have any training for December, but as of January 1st, all the officers in the department have begun their 2022 mandatory in-service training requirements for MOPAC. And the only other comment I have, and it's just coming off the heels of Luke's comments and concerns of the residents regarding the ambulance services. I did attend a EMS council meeting, I believe it was last week, it was a Zoom meeting, and there were representatives from Tower Direct, which is Medic 93, and we were assured that they are going to continue operations regardless of the hospital closure. They'll be operating out of one of the other buildings on the site, but they will be continuing ambulance operations. Thank you.
Thank you. And then the final November and December Planning Commission meeting minutes. I guess at this point, we'll just make a motion to approve everything for the reports.
I can motion that we approve the November and December Planning Commission minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Matt for the Acceptance of Road Department's six-year plan date, July 15th, 2021.
Thank you again. Last year, I presented to the board a six-year plan for the road department, which includes road evaluation of all township-owned roads. It also includes proposed paving, stormwater projects, and future needs of the department. This plan is a guidance document to provide goals for the road department and a plan for road improvements over the next six years. I'm sorry, the next five years. Reason why I say five years is the first year of the plan is pretty much done at the end of, was done at the end of the last year. But we'll review these documents and make changes on a yearly basis, and I respectfully request the board accept the six-year plan guidance documents, last revised July 15th, 2021.
You guys have any questions? Okay, I have a motion to accept the road department's six-year plan date.
They're moved.
For, I'm sorry, for July 15th, 2021.
Being a new supervisor, I did read the report in depth, and I appreciate the amount of time and work that went into it, Matt, and I thought it was very well done, and I will, I will move that we accept the report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're going to turn it over to Beth Uller with the municipal's Separate Storm Sewer System MS4 permit update.
Thank you. I appreciate the board having me here tonight, here for my annual update on the Township Stormwater Management Program. My name is Beth Uller. I'm with Cedarville Engineering Group, and we're the Township Stormwater Engineer. We have been assisting East Brandywine with their NPDS MS4 stormwater permit for the past several years, and really, this is, this presentation is going to review some of the accomplishments of the past year as well as what is to come in the, in the next We'd like to start out with why the program is important. The primary goal, and it's another acronym laden program, and for those of you who have been here for many years, I think you have it memorized by now, but the NPDS stands for National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, and MS4 stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. And so the program regulates the stormwater that runs off of township-owned property, which would be township roads and municipal facilities, like the Public Works Garage, park properties, things like that. So it's a federal and state requirement, and the point of regulatory enforcement is the outfall or the location at which the stormwater enters our streams. is, is the outfall or the location at which the stormwater enters our streams. And the goal is to reduce pollutants into our streams and, and effectively minimize and remove them as much as possible from your storm sewer systems. Ultimately, we're looking to protect water quality as part of this program. And again, if, if, if water quality isn't something that is concerning to the majority of people, it is a state and federal unfunded mandate requirement that municipalities of a certain population have to adhere to. Another couple components that it addresses is when you maintain your stormwater system, you're also being proactive with maintaining municipally-owned infrastructure as well as helping to minimize or reduce flooding events, which we've been seeing a lot of in the past couple of years here. The program components, and I say program, but it's also a permit. So you may be familiar with other NPDS permits. There's, there's permits for wastewater discharges into our streams. There's permits for industrial discharges into our streams. There's permits for construction activities that discharge stormwater into our streams. And this is just a permit for the municipal discharges into streams. The major minimum control measures, and there's several requirements that the township has to implement. There are six minimum control measures, and the first one's public education and outreach. And this is where the township publishes newsletter articles in, in the mile marker to make sure that residents are understanding of, of stormwater, why it's important, illicit discharge detection and elimination, and things of that nature. Also, handouts are available in the lobby most of the time, and posters are posted as well. And anytime there's any other type of stormwater outreach or engagement on a county level, the township also tries to promote that in East Brandywine as well. Public involvement and participation, and this is part of, part of public involvement and participation requirement, would be sharing information about the MS4 program at a public meeting like this, this right here. This part, this counts towards that requirement. In addition, the township is a partner in the Christina Watershed Municipal Partnership, which is a contingency of all of the municipalities in Chester County that drain to the Christina River. So you might think, where's the Christina River? But East Brandywine drains to the east branch, Brandywine Creek, which drains to the Brandywine River, which drains to the Christina River. So that is what that partnership is made of, and it's all of our, it's all our neighbors here in Chester County. There's not many that don't, that don't actually drain to, to the Christina. So participating in that partnership is part of public involvement and participation. Illicit discharge into detection and elimination, that's a mouthful for number three, but really, the, the basic requirements of minimum control measure three is mapping your storm sewer system so that you can trace where there are pollution events. So you might have a pollution event that happens in one location, but that's not necessarily where the source is. You have to make sure that you can trace where the source is in order to eliminate it, and you use your stormwater ordinance and enforce your stormwater ordinance in order to eliminate the illicit discharge. So that is a requirement of this, this particular minimum control measure. Cedarville, in, in coordination with the township, maintains storm sewer system mapping, and there's a web map application that Public Works staff utilizes. So we've moved away from PDF and, and hard copy maps, and there's interactive maps much easier to see and refer to the storm sewer system. In addition, this year, Public Works has started to use Survey 123 forms on, on iPad, not iPad, but a tablet, I should say. So that actually has been a lot more efficient in inspections, and, and we're able to attach the inspection information directly to the web map application. The inspection application, you can, you can attach photos directly too, so it just makes everything much more efficient. Construction site, stormwater runoff control is number four, and really, that's erosion and sediment controls on your active construction site. There's kind of a delegation agreement with the conservation districts that a lot of their, what they do handles this requirement. So really, what the township's responsibility are is to ensure that they are following that role. You know, they are following the conservation district's permits for NPDS for construction activities and tracking what active sites you have and doing erosion and sediment control inspections on your own as well. And similarly, for number five, that's post-construction stormwater management for development and redevelopment. So any best management practices like basins or rain gardens or infiltration facilities that go in as part of an NPDS permit for construction, the township's then responsible to make sure that they're properly operated and maintained long-term. Now, that clock started in March 10, 2003. It unfortunately is not, doesn't apply to the older best management practices. So.
Sorry, what was that date one more time?
March 10, 2003. So that's, basically, the MS4 permit requires the township to, and only for the larger sites. So only the ones that had the NPDS permit requirements for construction. However, unlike a lot of other municipalities in the state, Chester County municipalities regulate impervious surface for projects that have 1,000 square feet of, you know, proposed impervious cumulatively. So that, that falls under that NPDS permit for construction activities threshold. And they're, and the township's begun to do inspections to make sure that those facilities that are installed as part of those small projects are being properly operated and maintained as well, because that is also important. They were required to be installed as part of, as part of a permitting process, and we don't want to, we don't want them to go in the ground and make, and, and then forget about them. And especially with all the erosion and flooding concerns that, that we get reports of over the years. So this year.
I'm sorry, just because you're on this.
Yeah.
How are your other townships handling the inspections? Are they doing it like a Usidocacy? When they go to sell the house, they go in and check it? Or are they doing it on just a every 10 years set schedule?
So it varies per municipality. DEP requires the frequency to be once every five years, or sorry, once a year for five years, and then once every three years thereafter. And there's actually, there's actually some other inspection requirements as well. But that is, so basically, from, from the time that the responsibility transfers from, say, the developer or the contractor to the homeowner, that the inspection has to be done once every five years, and then once every three years and after. And then some, you know, some municipalities may place that responsibility on the homeowner to do a self-inspection and submit to the municipality. A lot of municipalities do the inspections themselves because there's more of an insurance that they're, they're functioning properly. So yeah, so there's, there are a couple of different ways to go about that. Now, there are going to be changes in this, to the stormwater ordinance, which I'll talk about in a little bit, which is going to, is going to make the inspection frequencies more standard across the board between, between municipalities. So yeah, so this year, we did inspect about 70 best management practices that were associated with NPDS permits for construction, so the larger ones, and then about 30 best management practices that were associated with small projects that were under an acre of earth disturbance, so more residential patio projects and that type of thing. So the follow-up inspections will be, be this, this year. And, you know, I, I think the percent compliance was there are only maybe three of the, three in violation of the smaller projects. Out of the 60, I'm sorry, the 70 larger project BMPs, we had a higher, a higher number of violations, more around 15, I think it was. So hopefully, the goal is to, as, as we continue to move forward with this program, the, the less and less violations you have each year. And, and we have a municipality that we work with that's further along in the process, and that's what we've seen, to the point where they're down to one, one BMP that has a violation after implementing the program for four years. So I think there's a good, a good possibility for success in that. And, and that will, you know, show the townships doing their part with all of the stormwater and flooding concerns that have, that have been happening within recent years here. And then finally, minimum control measure six is pollution prevention, good housekeeping. And that's really the township's responsibility to maintain your own facilities. Part of that is maintaining the stormwater system, storm sewer system. Part of that's making sure that the Public Works operations isn't actually contributing to pollution of the streams themselves. So making sure the salt is properly stored, and a lot of documentation. Really, this program's all about documentation. Part of, also a component of number six is employee training. And this year, the township decided to focus their employee training around those BMP inspections and the compliance program because it's important for everybody to know a little bit about it. So we, we talked about the inspection compliance program in detail, and then we went out and we looked at the best management practices that are right here in, around the municipal building. There's about four or five different BMPs right on East Brandywine Township buildings. Property were kind of, I would say, innovative at the time and proactive. So that was, it was a good, good educational opportunity to kind of walk around in the field with township staff. Okay, and then the, finally, that we have the pollutant reduction plan, which I'll talk about. And finally, I changed slides for you guys. So East Brandywine Township is required to implement a pollutant reduction plan, which was developed back in 2017, 2018, for streams that are impaired by sediment within the urbanized area. So for East Brandywine, that's Culbertson Run and unnamed tributaries to Beaver Creek. And you're allowed to aggregate where you put the BMPs. So really, wherever the, the best management practices are, it could be in, in the Beaver Creek Watershed or Culbertson Run Watershed, and it counts towards the 10% reduction of sediment. So what has been proposed to meet the 10% reduction was a project that Matthew mentioned earlier in Culbertson Run Development, which included stormwater improvements along Hawthorne Drive. This neighborhood had experienced a lot of erosion along the roadway and private properties bounding, that bound the roadway. And this project was twofold in that it obtained water quality credit for the township and meeting a regulatory requirement, but also addressed real-world problems and, and allowed the township to pursue Growing Greener Grant and obtain that money. Which, I'm missing a number there, it looks like. Apologies. And, and use that for water quality, but then install other stormwater infrastructure that's not normally, you know, associated with water quality as part of it. So that project was completed this year, and there's a couple of before and after pictures. There was a lot of damage to the roadway itself just from erosion of stormwater. And there was really, because of the age of the development, there was really a lack of stormwater management, which is typical for developments in that age. So that's not a before and after of the exact location, but we're showing that all of the facilities are subsurface. So what you'll see is just a lack of erosion on the surface. The road's been resurfaced, repaved as part of this project, and the residents have been, have been happy, from what I've heard of a couple, a couple of responses to this project. So as you can see, the vegetated swell was re-grated on the right-hand side there. And there was, there was really a lack of any kind of roadside swell prior to that. And again, there are five large subsurface facilities that control the stormwater management, the stormwater along the roadway at this point. They're accessible by manholes, so the Public Works has been inspecting and maintaining those.
If I can add one thing?
Sure.
Mike Mize is the president of the HOA. He's here this evening, and we worked very closely with Mike. We appreciated working with you and, and the Culbertson Run Development. And I hope that you've seen an improvement within the development there.
Yeah, the top feedback is it just works.
It works.
That's good to hear.
That's the important part, that it works, yeah. Sure.
Okay, so the other project, which has been confusing in our office anyway, is Culbertson Run Stream Restoration. So when we shortened the name, it's like Culbertson Run. No, not the development, the, the stream itself. So the other project that's on the docket is a stream restoration along Culbertson Run, the stream itself through Hideaway Farms, Estates of Hideaway Farms, Homeowners Association property. This project would meet the rest of the township's five-year requirements, and it's about 425 linear feet of stream restoration. So as you can see there, there's the picture of some of the bank erosion as part of that, that, the, the section that's proposed to be restored. And we've so far, we've completed a feasibility study and a funding strategy that was back in 2020. Over 2021, we've been coordinating with the HOA. We're still in the process of getting the informal commitment to move forward with the project, but the next stage would be pursuing design and permitting in 2022. And then bringing the agencies involved, the regulatory agencies, and starting discussions, pre-application meeting with DEP and the US Army Corps that would be permitting this project. In addition, if the timing with the, the design and permitting is right, the township could consider applying for grant funding in 2022 as well. And then construction in 2023. If it lingers into 2024, that would be okay too. But the requirement is that the projects have to be implemented by August 31, 2024. That timeline is specific to East Brandywine based upon the approval date of your pollutant reduction plan and the NPDS MS4 permit issuance by DEP.
And now, may I interrupt?
Sure.
Earlier, I had a reference to the use of the American Recovery Plan funds, and this would be an eligible use, and is a, would be my recommendation to leverage the, the federal COVID dollars against other grant opportunities to realize this project.
I can take that list of, my question off that list, because that was my next one.
Okay.
Yes, so I think this project is moving forward, and, and it may seem like that we, the timeline is, is far away, August 31, 2024. But with a, with a project that has this much bang for your buck in permitting with any kind of stream restoration project, that timeline disappears quickly. So, you know, we, we want to make sure that we stay on track with that one. Okay. The one other thing I wanted to touch on was stormwater, the stormwater ordinance updates. And I don't have any, I don't have any details on this slide, but generally speaking, municipalities with MS4 permits are required to update their stormwater ordinances for compliance with DEP's 2022 model ordinance by September 30 of this year. The changes are relatively minor in, in, when you compare it to the, the fact that the ordinance itself is like a 100-page document, the model ordinance. It also has to be in compliance with the Countywide Act 167 model stormwater ordinance. So Luke mentioned this earlier, but the stormwater ordinance was adopted originally back in 2014 to be in compliance with the Countywide Act 167 model ordinance back then. The Chester County Water Resources Authority is spearheading an updated model ordinance for municipalities to use as a guide to updating it this time. And so that's where you have to be in compliance with the countywide model ordinance also. It's anticipated that the county is going to release that model ordinance in March or April of this year. Chester County is fortunate in that the county is spearheading this effort because not, not a lot of counties are actually updating their 167 ordinances at this time. So, so that process will, you know, need to move along as soon as, as soon as it's finalized. They do have documents on their website already. So they're, they've had draft model ordinance versions out and, and been through public participation. And, you know, I think the process of developing the updated ordinance has, has been going on for about two years already, so they're, they're at the finish line. And yeah, if you want, if you want to take any kind of, I don't know if you want to look at it at this point, but it is on the Water Resources Authority website, the final version. And so, yeah, so that's, that's all I wanted to do in terms of giving you a heads up with the stormwater ordinance that, that will be an activity that occurs this year. And that's really all I have about the MS4 program at this time. Does anybody have any additional questions or comments?
I just wanted to point out, I read an article today that some of these streams with the salting, obviously, we need to do it for, for snow. Some of the streams have the highest elevations the day or two or week after. Some of the streams have the highest elevations the day or two or week after a storm and some of these streams are coming back with salt content higher than the ocean, which I felt was pretty incredible. But anyway.
It is it is true and that is, I mean, that's something, I mean, salt has been looked at as a potential impairment designation in Pennsylvania here soon. So, you know, right now municipalities only have to do pollutant reduction plans for sediment and nutrients. Certain municipalities have requirements to do things for pathogens and acid mine drainage and bacteria, but in the next permit round, there could be impairments due to other factors like salt and, you know, so that is something that, you know, if we could be aware of those things now, maybe maybe those requirements won't be as as stringent in the future. So it's a good, good point there.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
The county not getting their regulations out or their directions out into March or April leaves us possibly less than six months. I said, you said it's an ongoing thing.
Correct.
What's the penalty if you don't make the September 30th?
Um, that's a good question.
I mean, I think that's terrible, the county's waiting so long to.
So the county's been working as hard as they can to meet meet the meet the deadline and not meet the deadline. Let's just put it this way, you're welcome to start updating your ordinance before before that based on the final, you know, the final ordinance, but I think the county is providing this as a resource to, well, they're they're also updating watersheds, the countywide Act 167 plan at the same time. So, yeah, it is a crunch timeline, they recognize it. Is DEP going to enforce if you don't submit your updated ordinance with with your annual report by September 30th? I'm not DEP, so I can't say, you know, technically it's due by then and that would be a violation if they wanted to if they wanted to issue a violation. You know, DEP's understaffed, are they going to be physically able to issue a violation? You know?
Would you make a note to let us know if they're not out by the end of April?
I I am actually working on the countywide model ordinance as a consultant, so I will, I I you have that advantage, let's put it that way. I will help streamline the process as much as possible.
All right, well, that makes me feel better. Thank you.
Yep.
Is the county ordinance going to comply with the Commonwealth model? If memory serves, when we did this the first time, the township's had to comply with the county 167 ordinance.
Yes, so the county has.
Member of Commonwealth.
That's.
I mean, I know it got kicked down the lane.
Yeah, so there's, you know, Act 167, you know, has general requirements that that the countywide ordinance has to be compliant with, but then DEP puts ordinance requirements in their MS4 permit. You know, so some of the things, maybe there may be like a handful of municipalities in Chester County that don't have an MS4 permit, so those items would be highlighted if they don't need to include them. But yes, the countywide ordinance would be is intended to be compliant with Pennsylvania Act 167 requirements as well as Pennsylvania MS4 requirements. Yes.
And if memory serves, there were a lot of municipalities that missed the deadline the first time, or some, and I don't think.
There were some stragglers.
They didn't, I think they sent out letters.
Yeah, there were some, there were some stragglers. There's a, there's a wide range of dates where, you know, the ordinances were supposed to be updated at a, you know, certain date, but then they straggle in, you know, over probably a year period of time. So I think once, then, once the commissioners adopt the countywide stormwater ordinance, there is a finite period of time per Act 167 that you have to adopt the updated ordinance as well. I think it's a six-month period. So there's the timeline for MS4, which is September 30th, and then there's a six-month period, I believe, from Act 167, forgive me if I'm wrong on that timeline, but but we intend to streamline it for our for our municipalities with a matrix of what the changes are and and help facilitate that process as smoothly as possible, recognizing it's a short timeframe. We do want to meet the deadlines if we can.
Thank you very much, Beth.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we can have Mr. Melso, if you would. We had a discussion on 103 Aspen Drive inlet and the outlet repairs. You had sent an email and I actually had a personal conversation with you and invited you to the meeting. If you don't mind stepping up to the podium and you can just, you know, kind of give a quick scenario of what's going on and.
Yeah, thank you very much, boy, I appreciate this opportunity. I have three minutes, four minutes, I'm not sure what I have.
No, no, take your time.
Okay. So I've been a resident since 1998. I moved into 103 Aspen Drive at that point in November, unaware really that I was responsible for the inlet and outlet pipes on that property. Now, that property is actually taking stormwater off of maybe three or four other homes in that development from that that particular one. Now, three or four other homeowners in that development have a similar situation. I'm not sure how many, but I think it's three. I actually discovered by accident that it was deeded this way, right? It was, I think it was around the spring of 2021 when I decided I was going to put my home up for sale, talking to a neighbor, found out that this Cedarville engineering report came out stating that I was responsible, or they did this report, and saying that the private owners had this much financial responsibility. I did not want to leave the new homeowner with this responsibility, so I decided to be proactive about this and take care of it. I had actually no guidance on where to go, how to do it. It's not like I was putting on a roof or paving a driveway, no experience. I asked Cedarville for help, they really weren't helpful in telling me where to go, how to do it. I guess it's a conflict for maybe them to do it, I don't know, but just some guidance on how to how to approach this thing would have been helpful. I interviewed four and decided because of the way things were laid out, I did not want to have to get a tree surgeon to take trees down. I wanted, I maintained that property, I think meticulously over the years, and I did not want it to detract from the rest of the development. So I went to the extra expense of, well, I actually I saved money in the long run. I contracted it out, I think the guy came in at 15,600. Now, there's about a 15, 15% error in the linear feet as reported by Cedarville in terms of what was actually there. So he gave me a price based on Cedarville's linear measurements. He stuck by the price. Compounding that, the outlet pipe was not laid properly, so it was kind of jagged, it wasn't a linear, it wasn't aligned, and so he could not get that pipe in normally. Ended up getting all kinds of different pieces of equipment to get that through, spent weeks actually fixing that problem. So between the extra cost of the pipe, his equipment, I ended up, I felt bad, I gave him more money than he actually charged me, I mean, than he wanted to charge me, I gave him 17,000. I guess my question is is this, I'm not, I know there's a fear of a precedent being set by taking care of a homeowner like me. If you have other detention areas, how do you handle that going forward? I'm not sure how many other properties are deeded that way, that's the question. If you were to do it today, I don't think the township would allow a specific homeowner to be responsible. That that would be a shared cost or somehow it would be reimbursed. And so I'm kind of here to ask for consideration. Now, I have sold my house, I'm moving to West Burney One, Traditions of America, but it won't be ready for another six months maybe, so I'm kind of a, I'm living with my sister. So I am still in the township, I live in Downey Town. And when I met Kyle, I guess my concern was this, is that if the township and the board supervisors decide that, you know, it isn't fair, that just, in fact, Jason's comment, all that salt that eroded those pipes, it's not my responsibility that it eroded those pipes, I mean, it's, it's like throwing the ocean through there. That water comes in into that detention area, then I'm responsible for getting it out. So who's response, who actually owns that responsibility to get that water off that property? I mean, the pipe's there, but it's not, I don't know if that's my responsibility.
Let me interrupt you real quick. So the picture that you could probably see on the screen above my head, I'm assuming, this, this is the basin you're speaking of, your, your property, and it it looks like it has a portion of your neighbors, 101 and 103 is you, I'm assuming.
Yeah, 102 as well, 102 feeds into it.
Yes, but the basin is is shared on the property line with 101 and 103 and you were responsible for, for, just for the color delineation, you were responsible for the red?
That's correct.
And from, from.
And then there's an outlet that goes back towards Schenbürger's property. That line, that, there's a road that runs behind my, behind my property.
Got it. But you were only responsible for anything that was getting done in your property, your said property.
That's right, I replaced 100 and 160 linear feet of plate. Well, it was lined, relined. So, you know, again, my question is is this, if the township were to accept another property like this, would they, would they, would they accept that kind of deed, that deeds it to one property owner to take care of a detention area, or would that be something that would not take place? We're going back to 1990 when this thing was.
Yeah, so I guess the better question is, how many, how many deeded drainage basins do we have in the township that you know of?
Well, I just zoomed out one step. We started this conversation, zoomed in on Mr. Melso's former property and we could see one arrangement where there was a combination of township responsibility, namely the the green infrastructure and an individual homeowner, the red infrastructure. And if I zoom out just one step, we're now up to three configurations that are exactly the same. So if I keep zooming out, you will see that throughout the township, there is a combination of private, public, and PennDOT infrastructure that we've mapped, that's part of our MS4 system. But the the short answer to your question is, I don't have a a complete count. I can say, just looking at at this, I can see, what, seven, nine private basins?
Yeah, but I think, I think the Maria Patriot, all those are hideaway farms, so that's all through the association, I would think.
Yes, right, but yes, these, so, and and to answer your question more generally, the current paradigm, it would be that if this was built today, it would most likely be built as a cluster development and a portion of the land would be designated as HOA open space and the stormwater infrastructure that serves the community collectively would be located on HOA-owned property and the HOA dues would be used to maintain that. Whereas, and under the old paradigm, one or two individual property owners in your neighborhood got the the infrastructure and the responsibility and, yeah, I, I, I don't have a good answer other than that I appreciate that you were as conscientious as you were in maintaining this infrastructure. So you have, you have my thanks at a minimum. I interrupted the chain of thought here.
No, no, my thought process is simple. If if we can fairly quickly find out how many deeded, private deeded, I would call it multi-shared storm basins that we, if it's, if it's relatively easy, I don't know how easy that is, but to find out if there are ones that have multiuses for multi-houses on one homeowner's property, that's what I'm really trying to figure out. I, I know in in that particular development, I see four and, but, you know, everyone's.
Unfortunately, it's not unusual. I just completed a project a year ago in a neighboring township and there were two privately deeded retention basins that the homeowner has to maintain because, like I said, there is no HOA, these were smaller developments, I remember actually with, it's a Marshall Farms, right?
Right, Marshall Farms.
Right. And it's, it's, I know, I know when the lot was sold, buyers absolutely knew they were responsible, so it sounds like you weren't really informed.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, you know, not, that's more my fault for not being more diligent, I'm saying, but, I mean, I didn't look at the deeds, I didn't look at the, at the lot, at the plots and I didn't.
Are you the original owner?
No.
Okay.
So, so my suggestion, as I, as I told Mr. Mr. Melso when I met him, I said, look, I said, I don't think that right at the second we were prepared for anything, but it has to get presented to the board, the board has to go into discussion on this and and get a little bit more detail. And even if it weren't this very second that the township were considering reimbursing, that if there were grant money that comes available, if there was a situation where we find ourselves in an exact same situation as you are, I told Mr. Melso, hey, we're not forgetting about your situation, you're obviously, you know, first on the list here because you came to us and had to do this in order to sell and time was of the essence. I don't know if you guys have any more input, but I would definitely like to find out how many other stormwater man, stormwater basins are deeded to individuals and what their liability is for those.
We should have the information anyway, I think it's a good idea.
Following up on what.
Even if it's to take care of the water going out of that basin, that pipe.
Right, and following up on Kyle, when I, I read, when I read, read your letters and I, I did take the time to read all the stuff, you're, you're really looking for some indemnification if something in the future comes up where people are reimbursed? Wasn't that part of your request?
Maybe you could rephrase that, so I understand. What I'm saying is that if if the township decides that they're going to take care of the rest of the properties in that development and, and say that the cost per linear foot comes in at 90, $90 a square foot or whatever, I'm, you know, whatever that is, not, I'm not asking for what I paid, I'm asking for what you end up paying, all right? That's number one. Number two, I'm kind of, I'm concerned that I'm responsible for that water leaving as well. I mean, I can understand it coming in, right? But that water going out, I'm not sure that that should be my responsibility. It's the detention area is all it is. So if there's a way to.
Actually, I think that's a good question. The, I'm sure your deed only describes the water coming in and the retention basin and not, not the going out.
Well.
Is there a pipe that goes out?
Yeah.
So that dotted line is an underground pipe?
It is.
Okay, well, then your deed might.
Well, pardon the interruption, the, if I can zoom in, there's a riser and an outflow there.
Right.
I'm actually not sure what the dotted line represents.
It represents.
That dotted line is.
Is that a culvert, or, I mean, sorry, swale?
Swale.
Yeah.
Yes, it is, it's a swale.
It represents where the water flows and then at the end would be a, I think it's a star that's down at the end.
Yeah.
Okay, so that is the actual outfall, that's where it flows into the waters of the Commonwealth and that is the outfall that the township would be inspecting for illicit discharges. So that's why that's marked as a star there.
Well, that's, that's really all I had, I just really appreciate.
Yeah, absolutely, and as I said, I think there's a little bit more research on on township's part. I will tell you, you're not the first person, but you probably in my seven years are the second person that that this situation has come up. The other case was a much, much different, it was a basin that had grown wild vegetation, you would never know, it was in the middle of the woods from the time that people bought the property until.
Yeah.
When it occurred, you couldn't even tell there was a basin back there until it was sold and then it became a problem, so.
Yeah, well, I think Matthew will attest to the fact that I've took, you know, you've seen my property, I took really good care of that detention area and, you know, anyway, I really appreciate the time, though.
Well, thank you and obviously we've got a little homework to do on our end and we'll we'll be in touch.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Speaking of hideaway farms, we were just talking about them, Luke? Escrow release?
Yeah, sorry, I'm, I'm also driving the camera system, I gotta realign the camera. Yeah, so before you this evening is a letter from Panoni dated January 6th. Township engineer Nate Klein is recommending that escrow release number 15 be approved by the board in the amount of 110,013 and 09 cents. At this time, it'd be appropriate for the board to make a motion to direct staff to release the escrow funds as described in this letter.
I'm not willing to make the motion, so somebody.
Sure. You say you want, you have a question, Beth?
Yeah, I have questions.
Okay. I may be able to answer them. Fire away.
Well, it's, 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 it's sorry being the new supervisor here and I'm taking the time to read everything and understand stuff. I'm concerned that the remaining escrow won't cover what they need to do, especially the as-built drawings, which become so crucial. I mean, I've been a supervisor for less than a month and I've already had two questions where you need as-built drawings. It's only forty-five hundred dollars in there. That gets you maybe, maybe four or five homes. I know, I know that we've approved it already. We can't go back and undo it. But I'm just wondering, I'm wondering if, if, if the hundred and ten we're asking, if all of it has to be released. Cause it, cause the as-built drawings may change something.
I would even say that.
It's not unusual.
Usually Nate does the review to make sure.
No, I know, I know how the process works.
I, I understand what you're saying.
So my, my question. Pardon me?
Tom might know.
I'm just questioning that somehow when it was approved eons ago, there wasn't enough in there.
Well, I, I, I will add just this much as by way of clarification. First, under previous manager, escrow releases were handled at the staff level. I prefer to have them as agenda items for the board. Second, that the, the spreadsheet that details the individual improvements for which financial security is obtained.
Right, I, I read it and reviewed it last night.
It's contemporaneous with the developer agreement when, when the development was originally approved.
I recognize that I'm years late.
Right, so, so I, I, yes, that, that would lead into my comment, which is that if that is an insufficient amount of withholding for the purposes of developing as-built, the, the time to have corrected that would have been at the approval of developer agreement.
So there's no way that we can modify the release here to have a little more in the kitty towards the as-built? I looked through the thing and it's, they already put the monuments in.
They might have a letter of credit too.
Hey, I heard what Jason said. I think you could table it and go back to Nate and talk to him about it. Because this development took like fifteen years to build, didn't it? It was a long time.
And it's large. And if the as-bills aren't right.
Well, and the question is, is that even enough money to do the as-bills today? I understand Luke's point, but you might want to go back to Nate and talk to him.
I spent more than that on a seven lot subdivision.
Do they have a letter of credit with the township?
Yes, we, we, they have a, they have a letter of credit from a bank that is in the possession of the township, yes.
I mean, there is.
No, 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 no. The total amount's all the way.
No, no, I understand, but I'm saying that they.
No, I'm not worried about them not paying it. I'm just saying that that's not enough. I mean, if I was the developer, I'd walk away from it instead of doing the as-bills.
I, I understand your perspective. If over the series of fifteen escrow releases, the remaining balance constitutes a hundred thousand dollars worth of work and there's only ten thousand in reserve, what's your incentive to complete the work?
So you want to table it? Let's table it. We're bringing up to Nate.
Let Nate ask.
All right, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, sure.
Just, and I'm, I apologize for being a stickler here, but I'm.
Fifteen years ago, I bet you would have asked that question, so it's good.
I probably would have.
All right, so we'll table that one. Notice of intent to participate in township-sponsored healthcare benefits supervised by Scribner and Croft. Turn that over to Luke.
Yes. So section six oh six C one of the second-class township code states in part that supervisors, whether or not they are employed by the township and their dependents are eligible for inclusion in group life, health, hospitalization and medical service and other accident insurance plans paid for in whole or in part by the townships. Their inclusion in those plans does not require auditor approval, but does require a submission of a letter requesting participation at a regularly scheduled meeting of the board of supervisors before commencing that participation. This evening, I have for the board's consideration, letters from supervisors Croft and Scribner participating in various aspects of plans available to staff. I don't think it's an agenda item. It's just an acknowledgement that we received such a letter.
Understood.
It doesn't have to be approved.
Okay. Purchase of, of an Alamo boom mower Co-Stars contract, this is Matt, for number four zero 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 two zero zero four four.
Thank you. We've obtained a quote from Alamo Group Incorporated through Littles of Downingtown for a boom mower. This mower will be installed on our John Deere sixty-two hundred tractor. The existing boom mower was purchased in nineteen ninety-six, which was actually three years before I was hired full-time. So it's been around for quite a while, so by, but I'm sorry, and it's in disrepair. The quote is twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars and twenty cents. And it's Co-Stars contract number, as Kyle had read, four zero 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 two zero zero four four. And the, the budgeted amount for this boom mower was thirty thousand dollars. And it would be paid through the liquid fuels fund. So I respectfully request the board to approve the purchase of Alamo RM one sixty-five boom mower from Robert E. Littles for twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars and twenty cents. And this does include the installation on our tractor.
Any questions?
I move. We purchased the boom mower.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Subdivision and zoning, we have ordinance request for resolution for consideration for permission to draft and advertise amendments to chapter.
Yeah. Garden. They might not be on your screen.
No, it's not online. Oh, it is, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it is. Authorization to prepare bid document and advertise purchase plans for phase three of garden project. Jim? Sorry. We, we got that boom mower in our heads and it was all over from there.
I suddenly, suddenly feel unimportant. So we're, we're, we continue to move, make progress on the big garden project over at Bonsville Mill Park. And we expect to be able to install the plants in, in the garden this September. Phase three of the project is the purchase of the plants and the installation of the plants. We have fifty-eight thousand dollars budgeted for the plants. They will be installed by volunteers. The, the estimate for those plants is such that we have to go out for formal bids for the supply of those plants. So some of those plants need to be grown from, from the get-go. So it's important to get somebody on board, a supplier, as soon as possible. So I'm asking you for permission to prepare the bid document for the, for the bids. And once that's complete, to advertise for bids.
So is that the thought process, is it's going to be cheaper to go to bid on this for, for a whole versus shopping out portions of this?
Well, we're, we're, we're dealing with the county and, and the state grant administrators. And it greatly simplifies the process if we can go to one supplier. So we have done some groundwork in talking to a couple of nurseries. Sam Brown Nursery, for example, has agreed to be a clearinghouse for the plant. So if, if he can't supply the plants directly, the, the plants would be ordered through him. I think this is the best way to handle the, the project as far as purchasing the plants and handling reimbursement from, from the state and from the county for the, for the work.
One other question, are we allowed to go out of state for the plants?
I would, I would say so, yes.
I mean, I, I know Bruce could probably attest, New Jersey is, is key for agricultural plant.
It is, but some of the plants they're looking for here, especially plants more native to Pennsylvania. So they're trying to get Pennsylvania grown, Pennsylvania native.
Got it, okay, okay.
So I'll, I'll give my one second. I, I agree that having it from one source and installing this, if the vampire we have would be better to do one source than multiple source.
Okay.
And I, I would think that the distance would add cost as far as transportation and all that. That would, that would sort itself out in the bidding process, but it makes sense to go more local.
You guys have any concerns?
Sounds good.
Okay, sounds like you got the board's blessing to go ahead and out the bid for advertise the purchase plans for phase three of garden project. Have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to go on to permission to draft and advertise the amendments to chapter one eighty-two A, athletic field and township park rules policies procedures. And with Mr. David Summers, please come up.
Hopefully this will be brief and easy. But you have to wind your clock back a little bit to two thousand nineteen, when the parking rec board redid all of our policies and procedures. They were approved, it was advertised, it's by, was by ordinance. It went from the parking rec to the board, to the attorneys, the solicitor for review. I guess it was advertised correctly and then finalized. Well, when, after it was finalized, we realized that there was an error in, in one of the numbers. It had been changed. And that's in part five for other groups who, do you, do you have a copy of that?
Yeah.
Okay, so in, in type five of the first page, it's for other groups of ten or more. No organized activity or gathering of more than ten persons shall be held in the township park without a permit. Excuse me. That had been changed to twenty-five somewhere along the line. And we request that that go be changed back to ten persons for a permit. And that's for an organized function. And, and the reason for that is that, and we found this more so even during COVID, that people from outside are coming to our parks and using them and abusing them. And the township and EBYA end up paying for the maintenance and repairs. We don't think that's fair to the township or EBYA, especially EBYA, because they found most of the maintenance on the fields for the repairs. Which, it's, it's, it's a substantial number and I'm glad that EBYA does do that. But nonetheless, we, we need that change in type five back to ten. Ten or more persons that, that have to require a permit from the township. So we could get reimbursed for any abuse. And we know who's there using our, our fields. The other ish, the other issue is quite minor. And, and that has to do with the smoking, use of tobacco and controlled substances in the parks. And one of the reasons we're asking, this is just an update, it includes the vaping and other electronic devices. And the reason we're asking for that minor change is that the state is giving signs for posting for young, they're called young lungs, no smoking signs. And, and we're doing this in conjunction with the Bonsville Mill so they can get them for the Bonsville Mill Park and we can have them for the other parks as well. But we just need that, that, that minor change into that section G. We already had the no smoking in there anyway. Quite frankly, I don't know how we're going to enforce that part, but we need to have it in there in order to get the signs to post it for no smoking or vaping or use of other electronic devices. They're my two minor requests as far as the parking rec board go.
And I see the sign that you have in here that's an example of what it would look like.
That's correct.
Yep.
So are you asking for a motion? See, I, I'm, I'm not, I think the resolution has to be redone, Tom.
Right, was it an ordinance or?
It's an ordinance.
It's ordinance, I'm sorry, yes, it's an ordinance.
So, so the action item for the board's consideration is directing staff to prepare a revised ordinance and to advertise it. And it would appear back on the board's agenda after the advertised period had passed for adoption.
Yep. So I have no problem with you guys advertising.
Nope, yep.
Okay, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, public comment on non-agenda items. Seeing none, we'll move on to notices. An executive session regarding legal matters was held on January seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a motion to?
May, I'm, sorry, may I make a friendly amendment to the notice? We also discussed personnel matters pertaining to an individual's hiring, hiring, firing, promotion of an individual employee at that same executive meeting.
Correct.
If you have a question?
Yes.
Can, can you just clarify something? When it says other groups of ten or more, up in type two, it talks about township residents for private use with proof of residency required. So does that not include resident families in the township? When you, when you talk about other groups of ten or more for this that you want to change to, because I, I, I'm already thinking something's going to happen here. If a family in the township comes over to the park, and let's say it's a couple of relatives and it's more than ten, does that, does your permit apply to them? Or you're not counting residents in the township?
Well, if it's an organized function.
Right, if I, I decide I want to play football with a bunch of my buddies, I, we can't do that. But if I want to go over to the park with my brother and sister and their kids and we have fifteen, we're okay?
That, that doesn't require a permit.
All right, I just want to.
But, but if you and your buddies are there every Sunday playing football, that requires a permit.
Put her ante up.
Yeah, no, okay, that's, I just want to clarify that, what, what your number, okay.
Okay, motion to adjourn. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.